The hour is 5:31. Welcome to the Danville City Commission Regular Meeting for this evening, Monday, September 24th, 2018. We do have a quorum. So call us to order. I ask that we be led in prayer by Commissioner J. H. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all heads bowed, most gracious, we thank you again for this and another day. And we thank you for the rain from this weekend and from today. And we thank you for this country that we live in. We're fortunate enough to call it home. We thank you for your darling son, the able-bodied father. We thank you and ask that your presence be felt in this chamber today and that all the work that we attempt to do will be pleasing in thy sight. These are all the blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. People stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commission, you have before you tonight's agenda. Unless I hear otherwise, I will assume that it meets your approval. With that said, we're going to move right into the section called "Hear the Public", which is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium and address any topic that is not, I'm sorry, that is on tonight's agenda. There will be opportunity later on, after we get through some business, to do the same about any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. With that said, is there anyone that would like to speak about any item on tonight's Then we'll move right along. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Allow for motion to approve the minutes of September 10th, 2018, as presented.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins, as a second. Mr. Cottle, I'd like to offer one small correction on the, like, the fourth and fifth page. Second paragraph talks about a TIF district. That's a T-I-F with all caps. A TIF, a T-I-F-F is what we get into when we go home.
Oh.
And with that, that's the end of my amendments.
And leave that alone.
Yeah. I know you will, because I know Artie.
That's right.
Any further corrections, comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item two is the Planning and Zoning Map Amendment. This is the approval recommendation. Mr. Hunter? Floor is yours, sir.
Steve Hunter here, Director of the Planning Commission. What you got in front of you this evening, again, as you heard, is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to bring two properties in our community into the historic district overlay, or as we call it, the H.P.-O district. Both of these applications were brought forward by the property owners, one being the Montgomery Rhodes House at 305 North Third Street and the other being the Willis Russell Memorial House at 204 East Walnut Street. The applicant there was the Boyle Landmark Trust. The process feels and looks like a zone change, because it does the exact same process, although this properties, these properties were reviewed at the AHB Board for recommendation to be brought into the district. And then they're advertised and reviewed at the Planning Commission, again, to be brought into the district, which is technically a zoning layer, an overlay district that lays on top of the zoning. Might want to point out, both of those narratives were written by your historic staff. Joni House put these together. Again, the Architectural Heritage Board reviewed these with positive recommendation. The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission met September the 5th with six members present. All were in favor to forward the city of Danville a recommendation to bring both of these properties into the historic district. One is contiguous to the district and the other one, obviously, is about three properties to the north and won't actually be physically in the district. It'll be what's called a standalone site, but still be part of the historic overlay district. And then these properties would be bound by all the rules and the design guidelines and the review for COAs and future preservation efforts. I'm glad to answer any questions about these. Again, it's fairly light reading in your packet. The maps are in there. And again, the Joni House provided that narrative with some input from the property owners.
Any questions from Mr. Hunter?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this recommendation to include these two very historical properties into this district.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thanks, Commissioner Terry. Discussion.
What are the advantages for these properties to be in the historic district?
Well, for example, for the Landmark Trust, that, the cabin that's on Walnut, the goal there was to preserve the cabinet long into the future, to make sure the Architectural Heritage Board to use the expertise they have to ensure that the cabin stays in its form and shape, doesn't get moved or done, any demolition. Again, the advantage to the property owners is they believe that being in historic district preserves the character integrity of those structures and will preserve those well into the future. Others would say you're now bound by COAs and process, but both these property owners voluntarily asked to be in the district, again, to preserve two very historic structures in our community.
Any further questions or comments? If none, Chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thanks, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Item three is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Presentation. We have with us tonight Mr. Pat Hoagland, Branstead of Carroll. Pat, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor, Commissioners, and, I'll bring in the audience and staff with me tonight. Also has Keith Rodenhouser, one of our planners. I see the projector's working. That's a good sign. I'm going to give you an overview of the overall process that we went through in the master plan. So a little, the agenda, a little background and existing conditions, the engagement summary. There was quite a bit of public engagement. Park and Facility Service Areas summary, so we looked at the gaps in the services. Then through working with stakeholder group, sort of a steering group, we developed a vision, mission goals and objectives, some recommendations for individual parks, then other recommendations. We didn't look at just the physical facilities, and that's what a lot of people will concentrate on, but there's other recommendations to your system as well. It's a four-phase process. The first phase, the evaluate phase, is where we were learning more about your system and the city, doing the demographic analysis and visiting your parks and those types of things. And then the engage phase, which I'll show you some of the results of that, but there was quite a few different methods of public engagement. From all that, we developed this vision, working with this stakeholder steering group. And then from that, we're here tonight with the draft of the plan. It's just about ready. You've got the executive summary that was sent to you on Friday with some of the recommendations in there. I've given Earl a printed copy of the draft as well. So a little bit of background, existing conditions. Demographics, the city's steadily, you know, grown since 1970, but that slowed down some. You know, median age is 40, which is the same as the state, a little higher than the United States. You have a smaller percentage of children than Kentucky, but that's also decreasing. Higher percentage over age 65 than these other areas, you know, looking at the state and the nation. And then the population is 80% white and non-Hispanic, but diversity is increasing in the community. Existing conditions, as we went out and looked at the parks, I would not give you a very good grade on the existing conditions of some of the facilities. Playgrounds with no safety surfacing and backstops that haven't been used in a long time and cracks on what were tennis courts and then used for footsall or soccer. And then, you know, basketball courts with grass growing in it and just, you know, no safety surfacing playgrounds. So it's issues like that that need to be addressed as we look at some of the facilities. We also did some benchmarking to other communities, just as some background. We compared to 44 cities between 10,000 and 50,000 population in the southeast United States and then also nationwide to about 950 agencies. Some of the key things we found there, that in terms of parkland, you have more parkland per thousand residents, both the benchmark, that's the 44 agencies, and the national. But most of that land is all in one park, in Millennium Park. So it's not spread out very well to serve the community. Your budget is lower, you have a lower operating expenditure per capita. It's $51 per person versus 62 and 77 for the southeast and then also the U.S. Much lower if you start including the county residents, which you also serve through your facilities as well. Lower expenditure per acre than the benchmark by quite a bit in terms of the expenditure for the programs and everything. And that's also lower than the national median as well. And your capital budget is lower than the capital expenditure per capita by about half and a lot lower than the national group. And it's also even lower, again, if you look at the county residents. Some of the results of a survey, we sent this out to a lot of people. It was an online web survey and also a handout version. We had 1,143 responses that came back and just a few highlights from that. 99% of the people that responded to the survey have visited your parks in the last year. When we do this survey, a lot of times in a statistically valid method, it's usually about 81. So you've got a pretty good, high percentage of the people that responded to the survey. The parks they use the most are the ones with the most facilities. Millennium Park is the top of the list. 99% of the people that visited a park in the last year have visited Millennium Park. And then Constitution Square, Community Arts Center, McDowell Wellness Center, Weisegier Park, Bunny Davis Center, the top ones on the list. There were others on the list as well. We're just putting some of the top ones on here. The quality of the facilities, you had 25% indicated they were excellent, 60% good, and then you had the fair and poor at 13 and 2. Asked people what they'd like to see in terms of upgrades to the existing parks. 67% that like newer improved restrooms. And we do this all over the country and restrooms is always number one. Just, people just want nicer, better restrooms everywhere we go. And walking and hiking trails are pretty much always number two. And then security cameras, Wi-Fi in the parks, playgrounds, and those other recommendations as well. The most needed facilities that people said they would like to see, outdoor swimming pool and aquatic center, spray grounds or splash pad, an indoor pool, walking hiking trails, nature areas, indoor gym space and game courts, small neighborhood parks. And you see that, you know, outdoor swimming pools and replacement of the pools at Bunny Davis Center is much higher than all the other ones. So it's pretty consensus and you'll see that throughout a lot of this engagement. The most important actions that the city could take to improve Parks and Recreation is building, you know, by far, building an outdoor family aquatic facility. And the second was an indoor pool and then buying land for, to preserve its open space, recreational trails, older parks, you know, upgrading the parks and then indoor gym space are some of the top ones we see. See, they're pretty consistent throughout. We also asked people about programs they'd like to see. Summer concerts, and we find this all over the country as well, that those types of activities that bring the community together, like a concert can or parades or festivals, are things that people really enjoy. Learn to swim programs are also very popular and that was tied with youth summer camps, before and after school programs, nature programs, water fitness and teen programs are all, and the top, top ones. So that's some of the main things that we heard from the survey. We also had some public meetings in a variety of different methods, but we had, in this room, we had a public meeting and we had people vote with dollars. I think we did this also at the Harvest Fest in the fall, and that's me out there in the sun that day. Build new outdoor family aquatic facility. We've got 33% of the voting with dollars exercise we did. Upgrade your existing parks and build new walking and hiking trails came in second. Rec Center, and then the other that you see on the list there. Some of the other top things that people could put on the box on the right, you could put other things in there. And the top ones were upgrading the pool at the Bunny Davis Center, new parks and some tennis courts. We also had a board where people could put dots on there for the types of features they'd like to see in the parks. Aquatics was, again, right at the top, your natural areas and then trails, rec center, game courts, and then on down the list. But it gives you an idea of, you know, the people that attended, what their priorities were. But aquatics keeps coming to the top. Then we had three different stations, one for Parks and Facilities, one for programs and one for trails and natural areas. And we asked two questions. What makes them great now and what could make them better? So some of the top things we heard for Parks and Facilities were aquatics. Again, more programming being offered, marketing and communications, and that's a struggle for every Parks and Recreation Department in every community, is just getting the word out, let people know what you've got. Connectivity and the trails between the, between the parks and neighborhoods, some indoor facilities, landscaping and trees, lighting, and then outdoor fitness equipment. We also had a whole series of stakeholder groups. You see the list there. We were met with a lot of elected officials, appointed groups and committees, people from both, oops, both schools, sports groups and several community leaders to get their input on what they think the needs are for Parks and Recreation in Danville. Some of the top recommendations that we heard from that group are more coordinated services between the city, the county, Parks and Recreation Board. The family aquatic center is needed, again, comes right to the top again. Improving your existing parks, including some additional park maintenance staff to keep them up better. Improve customer service with some online registration and an improved website to make it easier, more convenient for families to register people. The fact that Jackson Park is really underutilized and there's a lot of potential there. The walkability to downtown parks and schools was mentioned, an indoor recreation center, community concerts, more partnerships, and then some sports tourism to bring some people to the community to use some of your facilities. And then looking at some of the mapping of the service areas, we had a whole series of these, but we'll just hit the highlights. We mapped a 10-minute walk in green to the existing parks and then the yellow is a 10-minute drive to some of the, oops, larger parks, didn't mean to go. And then the orange is a five-minute drive to a community or county park. So you start seeing some gaps, you know, the south, in the northeast, up the north, and then we also did a composite. We mapped, like, where are the playgrounds and where are the ball fields and where are the tennis courts and basketball courts? And put all those top on, on top of each other and came up with this map. So, this must be on a timer or something. Sorry about that. But this, in red, the darker red, the areas that are less well-used and the blue are the areas that are the best served by parks, all right, by parks. So you can start to see where some of those gaps are as well.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I found this slide interesting because that area across Millennium.
Okay.
It's marked as a low area for the, I guess, the northwest, but Millennium's right there. So is it because of?
Well, because of crossing.
Crossing the road?
Yeah, right. Crossing the road. That's why we use walk and drive times versus, or used to use like a radius. And then that was not always accurate, because you've got a railroad or a river or something like that, it causes a problem. From all that, we worked with this stakeholder group to develop a mission, vision, goals and objectives from everything we heard from the public and all the analysis. So the mission that this group came up with is the mission of Parks and Recreation in Danville is to provide a unified Parks and Recreation System that improves the quality of life for all residents of Danville and Boyle County through quality parks, facilities and programs. Wanted to keep it relatively short, to the point, and recognize some of the key factors that you're trying to accomplish. But also, there was a vision for the future, an inspiring excitement, utilizing a unified system of parks, programs and events to provide opportunities for interaction and entertainment while fostering community pride and wellness. Covers pretty much everything you want to try to do long-term. I'm not going to read all these, but we had a whole series of values that came out of the discussions and the exercise that we went through with this stakeholder group. But building community unity in terms of the services, safety of the residents and using the facilities, inclusion, people of all ages and abilities being able to use the parks, collaboration and partnerships to improve the delivery of services, and then quality leadership, being more proactive and having trained staff. So with that, there was a whole series of four goals. Modern parks, you see the different objectives underneath there. Family-friendly facilities, sports support and land management. And under improved connectivity, there's those gathering spaces, like I mentioned, people like to have those concerts and festivals. Nature, and then trails were the other headings in that area. Exciting programs and events are the community impact, inclusion and innovation. And then under effective management and operations, there was more objectives in this area. But unity among the services, finances is another heading. Customer service, the workforce, engagement, collaboration and maintenance were all the main goals in those areas. And you see in the executive summary that you had, it went into a little more detail in these and also in the plan, it goes into a lot more detail. Now, let's talk about some of the recommendations to your parks. There's just quite a few of them here, but one is, and I think the committee or the stakeholder group really was strong about this, having a single governmental department to maintain and operate all the programs in parks in Danville, with an office at a central location in a park to improve coordination. I think it's, right now, you've got, you know, the city, the county, Parks and Recreation, all doing park maintenance and it just doesn't make sense. It's not very efficient. Having a director to implement the community vision for Parks and Recreation is identified in the plan. Expanding the maintenance staff to provide adequate maintenance of all park sites, facilities and trails. Then adding some of those support features throughout the park system that'll make the facilities more attractive to residents, such as shade, drinking fountains, security lighting and security cameras. Implementing online registration, that's pretty standard in a lot of Parks and Recreation Departments throughout the country, and it's a lot more convenient for people. Expanding your program offerings to meet some of the unmet community needs. The people told us about the before and after school programs, concerts, nature programs, adult programs and fitness classes. Expanding your marketing and programming, development of an outdoor family aquatic center. Improving your ADA or Americans with Disabilities access throughout the park system is something that actually, as of 2012, that was supposed to have been done or had a plan in place. And then adding or upgrading restrooms where they're needed, because that was a top priority for improving parks. Some park system recommendations are replace the outdated and deteriorated playgrounds. There's several with no safety surfacing and then you can't even get parts for them anymore because some of them are old. Increase that Parks and Recreation capital and operating budget to be more in line with some of the other communities. Implement the Danville-Boyle Pathways and Trails Master Plan, and that isn't in the draft plan right now, but we just, Earl gave us a copy of that, so we're going to make a map to include in it. Add new loop trails within the existing parks. Those are something that people really like. You see a lot of people, a lot at Millennium Park, walking on the trails, but there's opportunities in other parks to do this as well. Outdoor fitness equipment, some of that equipment that looks like what you use in a gym is out there now that can be, be very, be helpful to expand the adult wellness. Some more picnic shelters were desired by the residents, some of your new and existing parks and future parks. Restore some of the natural areas that existing and future parks. Even, I think the original master plan for Millennium Park showed quite a bit of area that would be meadow, so you wouldn't have to mow it all the time. And there's a little area out there now, but I think more could be done to reduce the amount of mowing you have to do. A recreation center with a gym, meeting rooms, classroom, kitchen, aerobic fitness room and offices, ideally adjacent to Millennium Park would be ideal. A new, some new neighborhood parks in those underserved areas and a new community park on the southern portion of the city, and I've got a map that shows where those are. I'll show you in a minute. Seek opportunities for partnerships to promote tourism and improve access to recreation facilities and programs. Some of the system recommendations, this is that map. It shows areas where there's gaps down in the south, a larger community park and then some smaller neighborhood parks. And there's no specific sites identified for these. Especially this area up here is, if the Bunny Davis Center closes and you build a new family aquatic center, for example, over, you know, in or adjacent to Millennium Park at the fairgrounds possibly, you'll have a gap in terms of, you know, the park that's over in that area. It's also an area in the north and then the south where there's just gaps in areas that aren't served very well. And then some specific parks. Butler Drive Park needs playground replacement and the gravel trail. Cowan Park, playground replacement, picnic shelter, a loop trail and resurfacing the half basketball courts. Henson Park, or also known as East Main Pond, need a master plan for that. There's a lot of potential, develop that as a neighborhood park to serve that area of the community on the east end. Michael M. Smith Park, or it was Baitwood Park up until recently, playground replacement. There's some areas that are in the flood plain, so put it into an area that's not in the flood plain. They have that more of a nature-themed type of a playground rather than the plastic and steel. Some security lighting and completing the loop trail around the park. Jackson Park needs a master plan. Go through that effort, meet with the neighbors and people that will be using the park. The softball field, need to evaluate the use and improvements to that field. There's a game court that's there, it was tennis and then it's been used for other things and now it's falling apart. So determine if that's really needed. Some lighting and cameras, a new, a large destination playground to bring people to that park. Some restrooms, some picnic shelters, more and better access to the existing neighborhoods all around the park. And this is a good place for more of the outdoor fitness equipment. Millennium Park needs an update to the master plan, just to evaluate what you're doing. There's some things that have been added that weren't in the original plan and that's okay. We just want to see what the goal is there. Acquire some of that adjacent property at the fairgrounds, develop an outdoor family aquatic center and do a feasibility study for that as well, so you know what size and types of facilities that you want to have in that, in that center. Recreation center with the Parks and Recreation offices in that location or at an alternate site somewhere. Then reevaluation of the 300-foot field complex. Those were originally designed with adult softball in mind, but that's, adult softball has really dropped. So trying to look at what, what's the best use of those, the use of those four fields. Some tennis courts in this area are needed with some lights. Security lighting, shade shelter at the dog park. Take the gazebo that used to be in Weisegier Park and put it in this park. And outdoor fitness equipment area, again, some pickleball courts. And if you're not familiar with that, it's really growing, growing sport, especially among seniors. It's like tennis, but with a wooden paddle and a, in a smaller court and a wiffle ball. Some natural area restoration and some meadows and then some Wi-Fi hotspots. And that's something that people are asking for in a lot of places. So, any questions or comments that you have? And I only went quite, through quite a bit. They're pretty quick.
Any questions from the commission to Pat?
I just had one particular thing that kind of jumped out. We don't have online registration for programs at all. Is that?
Not that we understand.
No, we do not.
So you basically got to go to the program or to the Bunny Davis Center and sign up for a program.
Okay.
I guess, Pat, a question I would ask, were there any surprises here to you?
No, different in the fact that you had different agencies managing several different parks in the community and that overlap of services, and that's something that's unique. But some of the things we heard from the public were what we thought would be similar to other communities. Nothing really out of the ordinary.
Where would you say we excel?
Millennium Park is a wonderful park. And the Weisegier Park's a great place for bringing people downtown. You've got some, some nice spaces. They just need some, some work to bring them up to speed, to upgrade those parks. So the ones you have, have potential with some investment in those parks. And that's not just a one-time and capital investment. I think you need to have some additional maintenance staff and budget so that you can keep them up, so you don't have playgrounds without safety surfacing and those kinds of things in the future.
Your final report will have some dollar figures.
Yes.
Because all it takes is money, is, I'm pretty sure.
That's, that's a key part of it. But it takes more than just the money, because a lot of these things, you look at the action plan that was, that was included with your, they sent, it was sent out on Friday with the executive summary. There's quite a few elements in there that don't cost a lot of money. Some of it's just management, operations types of things. But it, to do it right, you need some additional staff.
Anything from staff? I think this commission needs to take all of this and read through the complete executive summary.
Right.
And spend some time really going over it amongst, amongst us. And spend some time really going over it amongst us and try to get our arms around this rather large challenge.
Yeah, I would like to suggest that we plan a series of meetings with no executive sessions attached to review and discuss this in more detail with staff. I could also see this being discussed, the city commission and fiscal court coming together with time to work our way, walk our way through this and discuss some things. And then, I'd like to see the executive summary or something posted on our website so we can, again, gather some more community input from our stakeholders and employees and everyone else who has a vested interest in this. So, that would be my suggestion to next steps is that we continue to work on this and put together a plan of action with the city commission and fiscal court, a combined plan of action or a plan of action just with the city commission.
Give us a little time on that and let us come back with a sequence. I think you're exactly right.
Yeah, you know, I think this, I can suggest a timeframe real quick to, right now, that we planned some of those meetings after the 6th of November, because it seems like the summers are getting real busy between now and the 6th of November. I think it's really important. I tried to work through this, that was in our packet over the weekend, and there was just a lot of exciting football on television, so I had some major distractions this weekend when trying to get through it. I'll be honest, you know, I'm a Browns fan, you know, when the Browns, you know.
Oh, yeah.
And the Cats, you know, so it was a lot of Kentucky State, and my seven-year-old grandson had a football game this weekend, so I spent a lot of time out in the rain, but I think it's a great plan, of course, I was able to read and go through.
So, we'll work on a calendar schedule and figure this out. Do we need a motion to accept this proposal?
Well, it's just a draft, so, yeah, we're going to wait.
Just a working plan.
Just asking a question.
Yeah.
I just had one quick question.
Sure.
Under your action plan, are these prioritized in any way, or is it just listing what we might want to do?
Not really prioritized, but there is, if you notice, there's a timeframe, zero to two, three to five, six to 10 years on some of these, so that gives you an idea, like, you know, there may be some things, for example, a playground that is okay now, but within 10 years, it's going to need to be replaced. So, we tried to look for some of those things as well. You can't expect you to do all this right away.
So, I'm assuming you do quite a bit of these?
Yes.
Give us, or at least give me some examples in other communities that we might go and look and visit and talk and?
In terms of?
Their Parks and Rec?
Oh, the whole Parks and Recreation Department. Well, there's some good examples in Kentucky, but not that many really good examples, unfortunately. But Bowling Green, it's got a really strong department. The northern Kentucky, like Boone County's got a really good department that serves the county very well. Lexington obviously does a good job, but that's a much different animal than you're dealing with here. But a lot of the same elements, you know, the customer service, the gaps in services, those things are still, still apply. You know, we just finished a plan in Glasgow, and they'll be working ahead. Couple, again, there's several other communities up in Ohio that we could recommend as well that would be good. Interesting to note that, like Bowling Green, when we met with their city commission and the mayor, they said, "We've got no money. We can't do anything, so we'll do this, and we will accept the plan, but nothing will happen." We've designed five projects since that happened in 2015. So, and other firms have done other work as well. So, they, because they had a lot of public engagement, had people involved, they knew that it was the right thing to do, because otherwise, all you here are the people that come to council and complain and say what they need. So, this gives you the tools you need to determine what the real community needs are.
Of those examples that you've just shared with us, under park system recommendations, the one that I highlighted, administer a single governmental department to maintain and program all parks. Are these some examples that would have that as an example for us to study?
Well, Bowling Green's a case where they have the city Parks and Recreation Department, and the county's got one as well, both very strong departments. They've got more people out in the county than you do, out in Warren County, but...
They jointly own and operate parks?
Nope. They're separate. The county has several, we did a separate plan for the city and a plan for the county as well, like this. And the county's recently built two new rec centers. We helped them design three regional parks. This county spent a lot of money on parks. I mean, that, the three regional parks was eight million right there, and plus they've been adding to them since.
So, you'd have baseball, a little league programs in the city as well as little league programs in the county?
They do, in that case. Again, they got more people out in the county than you do, and it's, I think it's a larger geographic area that you've got as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little different.
They're probably three times the size we are.
Right. But there's some cases where there's joint city-county, park and recreation boards, Georgetown's, you know, Georgetown's got a good program as well, that'd be a good one to look at. That's a joint city and county. Again, there's not as many communities out in the county, so that's probably more similar to what you've got. You know, Owensboro's got a great department, you know, Paducah's got a great department. So, there's other examples throughout the state here you can look at. And in terms of, like, the thing that was at the top of the list, the aquatic centers, there's a lot of good examples of those around as well.
If you would make a list of that somewhere?
Sure. We can do that. And our plan from here is to, we've just, Earl gave us the draft of the trails plan that we want to draft, put that into the report, and write some text around that as well, so we've got to get that, we'll get that in here this week. So, our plan is to get you a printed binder with the whole report in it, not just the executive summary, within a week.
Now, the master parks plan update for Millennium, is that part of, is that part of this contract?
No, it wasn't part of this contract to do that. That was, that would be separate. That's something that needs to be done, but with the guidance from this plan.
As we continue the deliberations on this final report, you got to be available to attend some of the city commission meetings to answer questions and concerns?
Sure. Yes, we can do that.
Within the stated contract?
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll do whatever it takes to build consensus and get the plans approved. We've always, you know, we've got a strong relationship with the city here, have been working here for a long time, and we want to continue doing that as well.
I appreciate that this is a complete comprehensive plan, even addressing programming, because I know the conversations that I've had and that have happened, when we talk about Parks and Rec, the focus always goes to Millennium. And we need to talk about the whole system.
Right, correct.
And I think this might get us on that, on that path, so.
Right.
Speaking of which, you refer to neighborhood parks. What would be an example, what's it, a neighborhood park as opposed to a, you know, regional park?
A neighborhood park would be like eight to 10 acres in size with a playground, basketball court, small picnic shelter, maybe some game courts, just something that people in the neighborhood would walk to, be willing to walk to. I think the goal is to have a neighborhood park, or a park in general, within 10-minute walk of every house. That's a pretty common, common practice. And you're not that far off, but there's some areas that have some distinct gaps, and people came to the meetings and told us about those, and I think you've got ways to improve some of those. Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I'd like to, I know there's a certain timeframe that we probably want to wait until after to have a workshop-type meeting on this, but I'd also like to do it as, while this is as fresh as possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Item four is the report from our city manager, Mr. Scott.
Tonight, I want to just briefly mention that I would request an executive session following our regular session for the matter of discussing personnel issues or personnel matters. Tonight, I don't have a specific city manager report.
Okay. We are now in that section called "Here the Public," the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium about any subject that is, has not been covered. So, the floor is open.
Steve Knight, I just wanted to come in on that last report, hadn't planned on it, but my goodness. I've been driving around the county for many, many years, and I keep looking, looking, looking. I haven't seen this money tree that apparently everybody thinks that is growing out there. My God. How much money are we going to keep spending? Spends, every time we come to this commission meeting, it is just about how much money can we collect and spend from the taxpayers? Lord have mercy. It's just, it's just shocking, it really is. So, anyway, and I'm sorry that the commission, these consultants came in and want to complain about us getting up here and complaining, but we're the ones being asked to pay for it. So, if you're still in the room, I don't know where you went, but sorry that if you're offended by the fact that we're complaining, but this has got to stop at some point. The people in this community are maxed out. That's just all there is to it.
Anyone else? Hello, Ms. Kirchner?
Briefly, there's a lot to this, but I just wanted to update you. We've long been talking about Airbnb and transient room tax collection in Boyle County, and I'd like to go more in-depth and come back and get on the agenda to talk about that. I'm sure you've seen some stuff in the paper. We also worked with K T I A, which is our Kentucky Travel Industry Association, back in late February on House Bill 383 to help convince Airbnb to actually add the transient room tax onto their website and pay directly to our local jurisdictions. We have about 30 rental units for Airbnb now, we're adding them every week, and we have about eight to 10 that are paying transient room tax. We're making progress, thanks to Jamie, we're making it happen. But we actually were notified late last week that Airbnb, the legislation didn't pass, but it did encourage Airbnb to come to the table and have a conversation. So, I'm happy to say that they're, they in fact are going to add the transient room tax collection when you check out of Airbnb, and then they will pay it to our county C V B, which is a huge step for us. The reason I'm here is because I wanted to let you know that's called a voluntary collection agreement. I'm obviously pursuing that, and it asks that we let our city and county know that that's what we were pursuing, that we plan to involve you in the process as much as needed going forward. I don't have a ton of information other than we're going to do it, and we're excited. It doesn't solve the problem of tax collection on other sites such as VRBO or Home and Away. If somebody books an Airbnb through the property owner and not through an online site, it would still be the property owner's responsibility to pay the tax. So, it's not a silver bullet by any means, but it is a Kentucky state regulation, so we need to enforce it whether it's a hotel paying or a small short-term rental. We're actually finding the Airbnb economy to be really exciting and diverse. We have so many offerings from historical homes to downtown cottages and stayover Danville downtown, which is an urban loft kind of setting. And our Airbnb operators are actually working really well together to send referrals. So, it's really a growing part of our economy that we're really excited about, as long as we can get it. We want to reduce red tape, we want to have them happen, so we're talking with our friends at P and Z. Bridgette has been great in codes, sending people our way. So, it's been a really good group effort, and it's moving in the right direction, so more to come.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I know that Brent Stater Carroll is working with the county right now to determine what we need where the jail is concerned, and I found it alarming to learn that they also have a division that actually builds the jails that they're recommending. Do we have the same situation going on here, where do they actually have a division that builds the aquatic center and builds the parks that they're recommending?
I have no idea.
I'd be real interested to know if that were true. And on a completely different topic, Leonard Court has a pothole in it that has been there for about eight months that is better than four foot across, and I'd really like to see things like that taken care of before we do new parks.
Okay. Ms. Brantley, I believe I saw your hand up, the one you can raise up.
Good evening. My name is Jane Brantley. I'd like to say, first of all, that I was excited to see the report from Brent Stater Carroll. I think we, as a community, need to study this process about parks. I know that large sums of money are scary, but I trust that the commission will do this in a, in a community-oriented way, and that we will budget for it, and it won't be done overnight, and to continue to be the city of firsts, we need to do what is in the best interest of the common good, which leads me to the original reason I wanted to stand up. I fell Thursday morning out on my walk. I have a three-mile route that I walk regularly for exercise. I was on East Main Street. I tripped on a crack in the sidewalk, I fell, and I broke my right wrist. That's not much fun. It got me to thinking about, yeah, I can be clumsy at times, but it, but two, we have a lot of sidewalks in Danville, especially in residential areas, that are in extremely poor condition. It's my understanding, because when I bought a house for the first time in Danville in 1978, sometime in the late 70s or early 80s, I remember specifically receiving a letter from the city of Danville stating that there were sections of the sidewalk in front of my home that needed to be repaired or replaced, and I had X number of days to do such, and so my husband and I went out and borrowed the money and got that done. It's my understanding that a sidewalk in front of a residence is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain. If that has been changed since the late 70s or early 80s, I'd like to know about that. If it hasn't, we've got a lot of work to do, asking people to maintain their sidewalks because they're dangerous and things like this. It could have been worse. I'm glad it wasn't worse, but we just need to put that on our radar screen if it's not already. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Mr. Wilson.
I grew up in this town.
If you don't mind, start with your name, please, sir.
Hi, I'm Jerry Wilson, and I grew up in this town, and what I'm seeing is money, money, money being spent on needless things. We got a fire truck, can't even get in a fire station, a new fire station up there. You can't put two bumpers or two fire trucks being in the end to put four fire trucks in there, all you can hold is two. The town is in terrible shape, the roads is demolished, you're taxing the tar out of us, and our water bill is totally outrageous. People are getting scared right now. It's only going to get worse. And I'd better see the water bill situation taken care of so people have money, and health concerns is beat head-on before it gets worse. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Your name, please, sir?
My name is Mike McGrath. I've been a resident of Danville for 28 years. You and I graduated.
Yeah, a long time, bud.
I've lived on Navajo the entire time. In fall of last year, my neighbor had issues with some massive flooding on his property. The city engineer and the work crews come out and developed a plan where there was a pipe in the street that was clogged, and they fixed that. They then installed a pipe under his driveway, which now diverts all that flooding water from the front of his yard to a pipe on the extreme left side of his yard. That water has been my problem since May. I have been coming here almost weekly, two to three times, making phone calls. Every week, I've got all this documented on paper, and I have never received the common courtesy of one single phone call to the flooding issues. At this point, the damage is estimated between 25,000 to 40,000. At this point, the damage is estimated between twenty-five to forty thousand dollars. My insurance will not pay because they say it is a diverted groundwater issue. Today was the only day I got any attention because I went and spoke with the lady over here and was assured the city manager would call me. He didn't. I heard from the city engineer, who after some discussion today says they're going to try to come up with some kind of a plan to try to do something with this groundwater. But this is a situation created by an engineer, and I can't recover damages. Right now, I've even asked for someone just to bring me a scoop of dirt and somebody to help me because I've had two heart surgeries in two days, and just to build a small berm around that side of the house to redirect the water away. That was one of the things we discussed today. The tip of the iceberg is Indian Hills has a huge problem. From the Indian Hills Christian Church all the way down Navajo, Shawnee, Seminole, and even back into Colonial Williamsburg is getting tons and tons of water. I know of at least fifteen people on my street that have voiced opinions to me about needing to get stuff done. We need to consider, instead of spending money on parks, fix where we can live in our houses. So, I'm just, I'm just looking for some kind of solution here.
Anything else, sir?
No.
I'm sure Earl will continue to be up with you on that.
Mr. Mayor, let me, for the record, say that Mr. McGrath came in, and I discussed very quickly thereafter that issue with our city engineer, who did contact him and discussed a plan of examination that he hopes to conduct and have a response back by Friday of this week. As we can appreciate, water affects a large area and not just a, a small area, so it has to be looked at from a little bit larger perspective. I would say that I, in the history of this claim, a claim was filed with our insurance carrier, and that was denied in terms of any liability on the city's part in terms of any flooding that's occurring on his property. So, we're not at fault from a legal point of view, but we're working to try to find a solution for both he and other property owners.
Mike, if you want to go back to the podium, you're welcome to. But if this becomes a, a, a back-and-forth between you and staff...
No, sir.
Okay, we really want, want you all to, I want this worked out.
I agree with everything he said up to this point, but the, the denial on the claim was based on Mr. Coffey's assertion that the water was not diverted, and it is not the cause of this issue. That is not the case. When you move water from here, forty feet over here, and, and direct the path where it was not going before, I've lived there twenty-eight years. My problem didn't start until they moved and fixed Mr. Kerbal's issue. Mr. Kerbal has been outstanding in wanting to help me, but will not do so because he's afraid that if he does something, that's going to put him in a liable position. Now, this was, and when Mr. Coffey was out there, he told me, well, this is Mr. Galloway's problem. Mr. Galloway created this, and all I'm doing is going around and cleaning up his messes, and that's why he was dismissed. So, if we got some problems that are created, then they need to be fixed because I'm getting it head, I've got it today. I've had water in the house today.
Thanks for bringing the issue. Let us see what we can do. Good to see you again. Missed you at the, at the previous reunion and at the sixtieth birthday party. Are you looking good? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into Commissioner comments. Yes?
I meant to speak on this earlier, too. On that plan that was shown, the, the fairground property out there, this is just my opinion, but either that should be made available for private owner to purchase so they could potentially develop that, turn it into something, or that property should be made available to the county school system since it's adjacent to theirs. Seems to me like that would be a much better fit for that piece of property. I really would not like to see the city purchase that property when it really should go to the county school system.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move right into Commissioner comments. You don't have any?
Do you want to go ahead? I was going to talk about the, the play, the meeting on, when was that, Thursday?
Yes, sir, last Thursday.
It was a really well-done production. The fellow who played Malcolm X, I thought he was great. And then our very own Chief also did a, I think it was an Oscar-worthy performance as the, as the bodyguard, but it was really interesting. The whole concept was really, really neat.
Yeah.
Wish there'd been more people there, but...
Yeah.
I missed it.
Well, about six hundred of our eighth and eleventh graders from City, County, D C A had a chance to see that same production. They did a lot of prep work before they got to see it, but it really was a great group of students, and they had them all in the same, Danville High School all at the same time, and that was really very special as well. And Frank did a great job with the talkback and the Q and A. But I was going to say just thanks to everybody participating in the Frank and Quirky Literary Festival that took place last week, for the entire week. We probably touched, probably seventy-five percent of the fifth, well, all fifth graders and all eighth graders, and probably about thirty percent of the Danville High School eleventh graders throughout that week had people in their classrooms reading African-American literature to them and stuff written by African-Americans, but really about people of color, not just African-Americans. But Frank spent two days in our town and did four presentations, probably ended up standing in town with all the eighth graders and all the eleventh graders. So, to have something focused on literary, literary writings of African-American people in our town for that whole week was just an outstanding accomplishment. And that was your announcement. My announcement really is that tomorrow from ten to five, and Thursday from one to eight, and then Sunday from one to three, come by the Danville Boyle County Public Library and get yourself a free copy of Where Did We Go From Here: Chaos Our Community, the last book written by Martin Luther King Jr. Free copy. And then when you pick your copy up, you're going to be given a chance to sign up for one or more of eight discussion sessions. So, if you haven't heard about this big event, please...
What are those times again, please?
Ten to five Tuesday, eleven to eight Thursday, and three to five on Sunday. He's challenged, challenged my sometime risks, other times. And then we have eight different opportunities for community members to sit down and discuss the book. Four of those opportunities are at Center College's campus, two are at the public library, and one is at the Dahlhouse Museum, and one is right here in City Hall. So, please come by, pick up a book, and read it, and sign up to attend one of the discussion sessions. When you pick up your book this week, you'll also get a chapter-by-chapter summary of the book that we think will get you excited about reading the book, so please come by and do that.
Do you get the discussion group schedule when you pick up the book?
Yes, mayor, you pick up the book, you have to sign up for the discussion session that you're going to attend. Is that? Well, it's free. You can sign up, come to all eight of them. I can't make you, I can't really make you come, but, well, we're, we're going to have a refreshment at some of the discussion groups, so it'll be important to know who's going to come, so, so we can prepare properly for, for that. But the book is free.
Anything else?
Yeah, what was the other thing? Oh, I know what it was. At last Friday's football game, Kentucky State University's marching band was not in attendance. They have rescheduled for Friday, October the fifth. The band director had an emergency with his ninety-plus-year-old mom, so the band was not allowed to come without a proper chaperoning, so you had to reschedule that. I volunteered to go chaperone, but they told me I didn't have any liability insurance to recover that, so. It's Friday, October the fifth? No, next Friday.
Next Friday.
Yeah, next Friday, yeah.
You marching?
No, we were providing an escort to the families.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're arriving to do a pre-game show. They're arriving around five, I think, four-thirty or something, so, okay.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move...
Mayor, if I may, I know this is a time where you usually share about the goodness or things good in the community. Some of you may have noticed, I don't know if you spoke about football earlier, if you attended Center's game on Saturday night. They played Berry College, who's a ranked Division III team. But there was a tweet posted today. There's a, a special moment during the game where there was a player that was quite injured, pulled out, had to pull out stretcher, nick, a very serious head or neck injury. But there was a tweet from Berry College today that I thought was pretty special of the athletes at Center. They said, after this student was hurt for Berry College, it says as follows, "Center College Colonels approached our sideline. They asked our team to join them in the field to pray. My friends, this is a beautiful example of what kneeling at a football game looks like in those moments, crying out for healing, and those football jerseys no longer represented two rival teams but one united people. Thank you, Center College, for showing compassion to our fallen Viking, who's their mascot." I thought that was a, it was a special moment to experience, but it was a nice gesture by Berry College to recognize, but those students certainly should be a company.
Thank you for those uplifting words. We need that tonight. Anything else? We'll go right on into the financial and payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry's the second. Commissioner Cottle, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of payment of the bills?
Wait, let me give the amount. One hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Thank you. No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item six is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen twenty-two. This is a codification of what, Ms. Peak?
This is the first reading of ordinance nineteen twenty-two, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danville, Kentucky. It's done once a year where we update the codes, all of the ordinances you've passed throughout the year.
Got you. Do I hear a motion?
So, move for passage?
Mr. Atkins, anyone, second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion? Sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Item seven is Resolution Number two thousand eighteen dash oh nine dash two four dash oh one. This is in regard to the Kentucky pollutant, pollutant discharge elimination period. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is the operating permit for the wastewater treatment plant. It is a five-year permit. The application has traditionally been signed by the superintendents of the systems. The state, the EPA, the state EPA has indicated Kentucky Environment, Energy and Environmental Cabinet has, has indicated that they're no longer accepting superintendents, and contrary to, contrary to the language within the regulation that they do accept the operator's certifications, they're requiring that mayors of the community now execute the document. We will be in debate with them over, over that. That does present an opportunity for administrative, administrative issues with what staff has to do with the daily, on a, on a daily, weekly basis. There's a number of reports in it that are covered by the regulations, so that we, we need to talk to them about that long-term. Meanwhile, we have a deadline to submit this permit, and we have it in front of you for approval for the mayor to execute the document as it's shown, and we'll follow up with those state folks as time passes.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion to accept resolution as presented?
I'll make the resolution to approve, I mean, the motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen, oh nine, twenty-four dash oh one, and I'm really excited about the mayor having to sign it because when I studied, I didn't know what I was reading, but, so.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Cottle, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is the first reading of ordinance number nineteen twenty-three. This is the sewer use ordinance. Continue, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. This is the ordinance that governs really our industrial pretreatment program. It identifies the constituents that we, we are required to enforce upon the industries in our community, for example, or those entities that our sewer use ordinance, to which our sewer use ordinance applies. It's simply a limitation, alteration, as you see with the, the notes on page two and page three.
Do I hear a motion that we have the first reading of ordinance number nineteen twenty-three?
I move for approval of the first reading of ordinance nineteen twenty-three.
Second.
Commissioner Cottle first, Commissioner Terry's the second. Discussion? Roll call, Madam...
Wait, 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 hold on, let me...
What? You going to add something to this?
No, I won't. If they have an overage, and this fee is charged per pound of overage?
Different, different methods of calculations to calculate the charges, but yes, we require, we are required to, to, it's really akin to a fine for their overage, and it's a, it's a cost that we're required to charge. Yes, sir.
Well, my question is, well, who determines the weight, the poundage? How is it determined?
It's part of just the science of it. I mean, there's scientific study or evaluations done. For example, suspended solids is, is a dried number, and, and we, we bake samples, and you collect the solids, and you can weigh that, and it's a proportioned amount. So, it's terms of parts per million, but that, that has a weight, for example. And so, it, it's all through the lab analysis that the weights are, and, and the various P P M, parts per million, is determined.
You know, Mr. Atkins, come on. Everybody knows that.
Any further questions?
Well, yeah, one question. Has, has, have we had a case of this happening recently?
Oh, yeah, on a regular basis.
Do you remember what, do you remember what the fine was?
Well, it's, it's not really, they don't, the, some of, some of the industries that, that these apply to, again, this is related to the industrial discharge pretreatment program, and, and it is perceived as an operating expense for those industries at times, and it, it's a, just a method to control and monitor what is discharged into the, to the water cycle.
But this is something that we're charging them.
Correct.
Not that we are being charged.
No, it is not a charge to us. However, these items in there, for example, B O B does have an operating, operating expense impact to the wastewater plant, which is why we're, we recover a fee for it.
To cover our operating expenses.
Theoretically, yeah.
I understand they're paying us, I just couldn't figure out how in the world we determine what, what to charge them.
Would you like to do that math longhand?
No. I don't want to weigh it, no.
There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Paris?
Yes.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Item nine is Resolution two thousand eighteen dash oh nine dash two four dash oh two. This is in regard to the highway safety grant acceptance. Chief?
There we go. This is just a request for our usual highway safety grant where we're reimbursed for highway safety details through the federal government.
We get this, first of all, is there a motion to accept that resolution?
I move for acceptance of Resolution Number twenty eighteen oh nine two four oh two.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Cottle. Chief, is this, we get this every year?
Yes, sir. It's for the clicket and ticket and different, you know, details that the state sponsors and also the feds. You got the clicket-ticket detail, then you got the seatbelt detail that go, go on throughout the years.
Any further questions or comments for the chief? Seeing none, I'll call the question on the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Commissioner Cottle, if you'll lead us into executive session, I would appreciate that.
Personnel?
Yes, sir.
That's what I understand. I move that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to K R S sixty-one, eight, ten, and one F. Excuse me.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cottle. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Terry.
He's turning my microphone off.
Do we have, any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. We will go into executive session. Pose like sign. We will go into executive session.
I move that we move into regular session.
Motion to move back into regular session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Madam Clerk?
Staff would ask that you hire Kyron Warren and Ryan McKnight to the positions of recruit firefighters with the usual probationary measures.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
And if motion is made and seconded, discussion? Call the question. All in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Pose like sign.
Staff would also like to ask that you promote Glenn Dawn to the position of Assistant Police Chief.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Cottle, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Anything else, ma'am?
No.
Anything else, Commission? Entertaining a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is made? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.